I would like to call to order today's meeting for July 2nd of the Board of Clark County Commissioners. I'd like to begin by having a moment of silence for the nineteen firefighters that were lost in fighting the hot fire in Arizona if we could. Thank you, and our thoughts and prayers are with the family members of those individuals. And also Commissioner Brager is unable to attend today, she is attending a family funeral, and for that reason will not be in attendance at today's meeting. Mr. Burnett?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item on your agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 21st, 2013.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion of approval, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Motion passes.
Item number two is the approval of the agenda with the inclusion of any emergency items, addendums, and deletion of any items. With the inclusion of one item in your addendum, you now have fifty-eight agenda items before you today. Staff is requesting that items number forty-nine, fifty-one, and fifty-two under the Business Section be deleted from your agenda. Additionally, Mr. Chair, we'd ask that the addendum item, item number fifty-eight, be moved up and heard after item number forty-eight.
Do we have a motion for approval with those changes? Are there any additional changes? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion passes.
Item number three is public comment.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board of County Commissioners, please step forward, identify yourself for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Seeing none, I will close this portion of public comment.
We can move to the consent agenda, that's items number four through forty-one. There have been no recommendations to take items separately to this point, and no items have been deleted either.
Do we have any items that Commissioners would like to be heard separately on the consent agenda? Commissioner Weekly?
Item number twenty-six, please.
Item number twenty-six. Any others? Seeing none, do we have a motion for the consent agenda approval with the exception of item number twenty-six, which will be heard separately? We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda item with the exception of item number twenty-six will be heard separately. Please cast your votes. Motion passes.
That, Mr. Chairman, we can move to Section Three, Commissioners' County Manager's Recognition.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a moment before we go to our first county recognition item and recognize a young man who I believe have just really provided some great service here in our community, and today I'm extremely honored. I'm looking around the room here, I think he's still sitting in the lobby here, but hopefully he'll come in and allow us to acknowledge all of his hard work and commitment he's given to our community. Today, I understand it's his last day with Cox Communications, and I thought it would be so befitting that we recognize and just thank Mr. Steve Shore for all of his outstanding contributions that he has given to our community. Mr. Shore, yes, Captain Burns, if you can grab him and drag him in here. He didn't want to come down, but I kind of forced him. I said, "Listen, you gotta get down here, I'm gonna send a police escort to come and get you." So, today, everybody, I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize Mr. Steve Shore and have him, if he would come in the door here, to be recognized by all of us so that we could just say thank you to all of... Did he leave? Wow, he took off running. Well, let's give him a round of applause anyway, everybody. He'll watch the rebroadcast and know that we appreciate all of his hard work and due diligence that he's given to us in this community. So, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Item forty-two is to recognize the members of the Safe Village Initiative and its community engagement strategies that have led to dramatic environmental changes to our urban neighborhoods, and present a proclamation to Dr. Alonzo Jones for his service to the youth and families of Clark County since 2001.
Thank you very much, everybody. Today is a very special day. We're gonna recognize an amazing group of men and women who have made an outstanding contribution in our community. I'm so very pleased to have many of these representatives from so many organizations and agencies that have joined together to just make our community, which has been deemed as a real challenging community, a better and safer place to live in. So, help me with this presentation. I'm gonna ask our director, Department of Juvenile Justice, please come down and join me, Mr. Jack Martin, and also Mr. Mujahid Ramadan. If you gentlemen will please join me in helping to recognize Safe Village, everybody. A big round of applause.
Thank you. There are about, I would say, close to thirty organizations that are involved with Safe Village, and today we are going to just take a moment just to recognize many of these representatives. I'm gonna let Jack start off, please.
Well, I'd like to speak specifically about Dr. Alonzo Jones and what he has done for the Department of Juvenile Justice Services. Dr. Jones, if nobody knows you, I know you've been here before. If you'd stand up for us, or come up, however that works. Doctor... For us in Juvenile Justice Services, how do you quantify kids that don't make it into our system? At-risk kids that, in all of our communities, that never make it to Juvenile Justice Services? And, you know, it's through efforts like Dr. Jones presents, through his martial arts, through his environmental structuring, through his hard work, dedication. There's no place in Clark County that you won't find Dr. Jones where there's disadvantaged youth or youth in trouble, whether that be the hospital after a violent incident, whether that be at one of our recreation centers, at my detention center, anywhere and everywhere where there's kids that he keeps out of our system. It's just a true blessing, and Dr. Jones is gonna be leaving Las Vegas, which for us is a sad day, but also it's been a great honor to know you, Dr. Jones, and to feel your passion for children and disadvantaged children. I mean, it's absolutely a pleasure to meet you and know you. Thank you very much.
We echo Dr. Jones, not only his work with overall in this community, but Safe Village has been just a tremendous partner, and we've had many good partners like that. And Safe Village is made up of people and organizations all over our valley. I'd like for the Area Command Captain, Captain Larry Burns. Larry, if you'd come down and join us also, from the Bolden Area Command. But Safe Village as a family and as a network, and we'd like, as Larry's gonna come up and share with us the impact from the law enforcement, but with the Safe Village family members, those from Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, the Nation of Islam, and all of you here on the list here, would you all, Safe Village people who are here from Safe Village, please stand, who are involved in Safe Village Initiative? And so, it's an important network of people that have transformed the community. Dora Legrand, who's the Commissioner of Housing Authority, is currently traveling in Europe Commission. I think she's buying purses in Paris today, so she couldn't be with us, but she really appreciates the fact of your recognition and all of you support and that are part of this. We have a tremendous impact in transforming the community with organizations that are here and organizations that are here, the Las Vegas Valley Water District is a part of the partnership in transforming Sherman Gardens, and we hope to invite you out when we finally unfold that. But we'd like for Captain Burns to talk to us about the specifics and the impact of how we've transformed, as you mentioned, crime in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Just to give you an idea, and I wish that I wouldn't be able to do this or even have a need to do this, but imagine that you had the experience of seeing a young man from our community, life taken from him way too soon, lying in a neighborhood in midday, a sheet over the top of him while the investigation carries on, children milling about in the neighborhood because this has become far too common an occurrence over time. Actually, they're not the scurrying about of news personnel because, again, it's just another one of those deaths that has happened again. No rhyme or reason, we're frustrated about it, don't know how to report about it, it's just really almost too tragic. And that was a situation, Deputy Chief Kevin McMahill, who I directly report to, as he worked in the Bolden Area Command and found himself on another one of those scenes, because typically, quite frankly, in what we would refer to as the inner city, we average somewhere between twenty and twenty-five of those events every single year. No good reason for this whatsoever. We have tried, and I've been a police officer for nearly thirty years now, and as I was reassigned there a few years ago and came back after two and a half decades, I was seeing the same things that I saw two and a half decades ago. Our sheriff is a good leader, and he has trained each of us leaders in the organization. This one simple truth that all of us understand and know. If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got. And we recognize that's a simple truth, but what are we gonna do about it? And so, it was on one of these events almost three years ago now that Chief McMahill responded and saw this awful scene in Sherman Gardens neighborhood, and said, "We've gotta do something about this." And wasn't sure what he was gonna do, but he knew something had to happen. He went out to Commissioner Legrand at the Housing Authority, and then the brand-new Director, John Hill, brought them out. Dr. Jones has always been around. Pastor Willie Cherry has always been there and been around. Mujahid Ramadan has always been around and been there, but he gathered the few that he could count on and brought them out there and stood on that ground, you know, and now made sacred with the blood of a young man, somebody's son, just somebody's grandson, so senseless, and said, "What do we do?" They walked through the neighborhood and really looking for the answer. If what we're doing isn't working, what do we do differently? There's something that we come to work with most every day, at least I know I do, and that is that the best ideas have not come forward yet, and I won't be the ones to come forward with them. And as we consider those two truths, we open our ears and close our mouths and listen to ideas from any quarter, because we just know it's out there, it's gonna come forward, but what is it? And Chief McMahill took the time to ask everyone, old ladies, young children, those individuals marked as gang members, those who were marked as ex-offenders. Everybody had a stake, a fair and equal stake at the table, to determine what do we do to stop this? That was three years ago. Well, I'm gonna tell you, and it would take me easily an hour to give you just even a thumbnail view of what has been done. Won't happen, won't happen, Commissioner, I know you know. But let me just tell you this, let me tell you what's happened in three years. Let me tell you, this isn't a program, and we're not seeking recognition. And God bless Lawrence Weekly for, as this good Commissioner, who has been an equal partner of ours the last three years. He has been there with us, as has Ricky Barlow, has been there from the city side, many of your staffers, the county parks and rec, the county hospital. We've had so much support. We brought these partners in as we recognized someone who could add a dimension that we did not have there. Let me cut to the end of the chase, and it's not the end, because it is a process, not a program. If I could just have stand up, those who have come today that have a part of Safe Village, would you just stand up? I want you to be recognized. Just stand up. Now, these people are not paid, they're not paid extra money, and most of them aren't paid for their services at all, but every Monday at three o'clock, if you want to find us, we'll be in the county housing chambers, having our weekly meeting. Unless it's a holiday, you'll find us there for ninety minutes. We've done that every week, to include yesterday, for ninety minutes, brought together an amazing coalition, and Commissioner Weekly's exactly right. Closer to fifty representatives are there at any given time, thirty to fifty, every week, and we talk about real things, real names, real people. And then when we're done talking, we take the next six days to get out there to those places that we've talked about. We've brought the faith-based community, every faith, Christian and non-Christian, Jew, Muslim, we've brought everyone out, everyone that has a stake, willing to step forward and to do something. Well, where does that bring us, three years later? You know the statistics, we watch them, sadly, we're worried about them. Our numbers have gone down, we've talked about budgets all we want, the budgets have been cut back, it's been difficult times for law enforcement. But you know, we recognize we're not gonna arrest our way out of this problem. We had five hundred extra cops at one time, and we gave it our best, but the problem was still there, it needed to change. We've lost those cops, and we've lost a great deal of that money. And let me tell you what's happened in the inner city. Give you an idea of what that is in Las Vegas, that would be I-15 west to Jones, and it would be Desert End north to North Las Vegas. In that little corridor, we could fairly describe that as our inner city. It's been fifty-four homicides so far this year in the first half of Metro's jurisdiction of 2013, fifty-four murders. In the inner city, Bolden Area Command, sadly, we had one at a nightclub just last Tuesday morning, it was our second that we've had in the first six months. But it's only two, where normally our share of fifty-four would be upwards of fifteen of those, we've had just two. Across the community, violent crime, we've got it down, it's up five percent, but we've got it down to that. It's been up as high as eight percent across our jurisdiction and all the jurisdictions in the land. We've watched that trend happen with violent crime. It's up in Metro jurisdiction right now, as I said, five percent. In the inner city, Bolden Area Command, because of the efforts of these people and many that are not seen here today, but we recognize them, violent crime in the inner city in Las Vegas, Nevada, is down eight percent the first half of this year. It's just an amazing feat, it truly is. Not, as a matter of fact, not only not an extra policeman, less policemen than we've ever had in that area, we do not do saturation patrols, we do community patrols. It's a community problem. Let me tell you what, at any time you come by, I'll fill your ear, I'll take you out there, we'll fill your ear, we'll invite you to participate with us. We're so grateful for those individuals who have stepped up and helped us. We're getting the resort corridor, who have helped us. Go to see Sherman Gardens, take a look at what's not costing taxpayer a dime, but transforming a neighborhood. Take a look at the way police are interacting with the youth of our communities and the elderly of our communities. We know that confession is good for the soul, not so good for the reputation, but we've done our confessing. We've come to the table, we've settled our differences, and we're truly united and gone forward. God bless these people for everything that they've done. Thank you so much for giving us a moment to recognize them.
He just can't help himself, everybody. He just can't help it. I guess so. Well, let me do this first, let me present this to you, Dr. Jones, and just say thank you so very much, and I'm sure all of your peers and colleagues out here would join me in saying, "You're gonna be sorely missed. You definitely have made a significant difference in our community. We know you're going on to do greater things, and of course, priorities has its place." And so, God bless you, man, and thank you very, very much. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you, Las Vegas, Clark County, for allowing me to be a part of this time-honored tradition of creating heroes in our community. We've done a lot of good, I think, and I truly appreciate you, men like Melvin Inas, Imam Mujahid Ramadan, and Captain Burns, Director of Juvenile Justice, Jack Martin, and certainly Ms. Belinda Thompson. We've done an incredible job here of aligning ourselves with the idea of love, science, and action. And just to tell you a little bit about what that means, when we talk about love, we're talking about helping our youth blend their academic, social, emotional, and self-controlled traits while assisting them in mastering the developmental tasks necessary to enjoy a satisfying and productive life. When we're talking about science, we wanna look at violence in our community as a public health issue, and we know that we have to look at our community as an organism, and that organism can bring about its own homeostasis if it is empowered to overcome the risk factors versus protective factors. And lastly, we wanna talk about action, engaging in that constant idea of process improvement through assessment, capacity, planning, implementation, and evaluation. And we appreciate you, I appreciate you for allowing me to be a part of, again, this time-tested tradition, thank you.
Half of it, I don't know what he said, but okay. Okay, very good. Captain Burns, if you'd accept this, and this has, of course, all the Safe Village partners. At your next meeting, y'all can sip from the cup of success. Sheriff, and Pat Morroy, if you'd come up, please, just really briefly here, and Mr. Chair, we're almost, and this is a very special one here. This is, they have been just extremely lifesaving for a lot of people, and Pat, we can't thank you enough, the program that you all helped implement through the Las Vegas Valley Water District. Sheriff, thank you very much for the support. I know Sheriff Sisalak and Commissioner Larry Brown are both on fiscal affairs. Okay, you guys are a little noisy now, I'm up here talking. Yeah, 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 you're being a little noisy down there, Tom. At any rate, I just wanna make sure that, why did I get stuck holding this? At any rate, we just wanna say thank you all so very much, and partners out there in the community, those that couldn't make it, thank you all so very much. And I'm sure on behalf of the community, we appreciate y'all very much, so thank you, thank you.
Can we do that? Can we get a photo with them? Can we get a photo down here with the whole team?
Item number forty-three is to present a proclamation of Ronald McDonald House Charities of Greater Las Vegas, proclaiming the month of July 2013 as Ronald McDonald House Charities of Greater Las Vegas Month.
Okay, can I get the representatives from the Ronald McDonald Charities and the Ronald McDonald House to please come down, please? Tom, you have bacon and eggs in the back. And biscuits and gravy. Come on down, ladies and gentlemen. Hey there, Al, how are you? Good, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us this morning, it's such an honor to be here. Gosh, for the past twenty years or so, I've been covering the county commission. I think I've probably put a microphone in front of each of your faces at one point or another, but this is the first time I've ever had the honor of addressing the commission and saying thank you for all of your service to our community. And we are celebrating a very special year at the Ronald McDonald House, fifteen years of being a house. And for those of you who might not be familiar with what we do, the families who come through our doors have had their world turned upside down by the serious illness or injury of their child. And we try to embrace the family in every way possible. We want them to have a safe place to lay their head at night. We want them to not have to worry about where their next hot meal is coming from. A lot of times, they're trying to deal with the illness and injury of their child while also still raising those siblings. We get them to and from the hospital, we try and give them as much emotional support as we can. But we are a small staff and a small board, and we couldn't do it without the tremendous support we get from our community. We are celebrating fifteen years strong, looking forward to the next fifteen years of serving our community and families in need. And we wanna say to every volunteer out there who has ever made a meal or driven our families or given them a hug, to every donor out there who's ever given a dollar or a hundred thousand dollars. All of that keeps us going, day after day, and we are very passionate about what we do, and we are here for our families in need, and we just wanna say thank you for this honor, and thank you so very much for all of your support.
Also, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we'd like to present you with this Ronald McDonald House Charities Greater Las Vegas Proclamation, and thank you so very much to you and all the representatives here with us today to say thank you on behalf of all the children, especially those who need you most. So, thank you very much for your, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item forty-four is to present a proclamation of the Clark County Regional Flood Control District, proclaiming the month of July 2013 as Flood Awareness Month, Flash Flood Awareness Month, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett, and I'd invite Gail Fraser, the General Manager for the Flood Control District. We're close, officially have begun flood season, and it was twenty-five years ago, a few years longer than that when it was created, but twenty-five years ago, the first construction project started with the Flood Control District, and over the past twenty-five years, the community has invested $1.7 billion, and that has built ninety detention basins, five hundred and eighty-one miles of channels. And the good news is, everything we've built in the last twenty-five years works. The flip side of the coin is, we've got a long way to go. We have another billion-plus to invest over the next twenty-five years, and that's part of the mission of the district, is to build the facilities to keep floodwaters away from people. And last year was interesting, it was a tale of two cities. We had some of the wettest days and months on record, and yet, in the areas where we had torrential rain and the facilities were built, we had hardly an incident, almost unnoticed. And yet, as we're all aware, in those areas like Desert Rose Golf Course, where the facilities are planned to be built, we had devastation and actually a loss of life. So, it's always a constant reminder that our system works, but we have so much more to do. And that's one part of the mission. The other part of the mission, I'll let our General Manager, Gail Fraser, introduce, that's the outreach and the education. Gail?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, we are very proud of keeping the floodwaters away from people, and it becomes more and more difficult to keep people away from floodwaters. And as we build more and more of the flood control infrastructure and system out there, it seems like that's becoming more of a magnet for people to find themselves in harm's way. We haven't seen anybody die recently from driving through flooded areas, but still do not drive through flooded areas, but also stay out of the flood control network and flood control system. In fact, we have a little video that's showing here of what ten inches of water can do out in Boulder City this last summer. And this shows you the force of that water and how dangerous it is. These are not playgrounds, if you wanna go play, play at Wet and Wild. But let's, regrettably, we had two losses of lives last year, Pittman Wash out in Henderson with a teenager, and as the Commissioner said, Desert Rose Golf Course. And this is what the end of the journey may look like if you're in one of the flood control systems. So, please, let's have a safe one out there, let's make smart decisions, let's avoid flooded areas, stay high, stay dry, and stay alive, or as the National Weather Service says, "Turn around and don't drown." Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. And as part of the outreach this year, we've traditionally done our billboard contest where we have people create billboards. This year, we've gone high-tech, we've created an app on those smartphones or whatever they're called, and you can get on it and actually use our app to identify where floodwaters are to avoid them, you can report them, you can learn more about facts and figures from the Flood Control District, flood insurance. Most of all, it allows our community to become far more interactive with the district. So, I wish I knew the name of the app, but we have an app for that. Anybody wanna throw that out, where do we find it on?
Flood Spot.
Flood Spot? Most of you will understand that. But, and I also wanna recognize certainly the member agencies. Commissioner June Kiliani has been holding some town hall meetings with maybe one of our largest projects, upwards of $50 million, to address the area in and around Desert Rose. But the member agencies, the city and the county are partnering in that, and it's been part of the reason we've been so successful over twenty-five years is all the agencies getting together and eliminating jurisdictional boundaries and creating truly a regional facility. So, Gail, on behalf of the Commission, congratulations to you and your staff, and let's have a safe flood season. Thank you.
Item forty-five is to proclaim the month of July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month in Clark County, and encourage residents and citizens to improve their lives by enjoying the benefits of parks and recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. If I could ask Jane to come on down with her staff while I begin. July is Parks and Recreation Month. Across the country and the world, citizens love parks and recreation services for the many benefit programs providing, including improved health, new skills, mental refreshment, and rich opportunities to connect with the community. National Parks and Recreation Month has been celebrated since 1985, and in Clark County, the celebration spans fifty years of service as the county's Parks and Recreation Department recognizes its birthday of 1963. In honor of Parks and Recreation Month, Clark County recognizes, parks, programs, and open spaces reduce obesity and healthcare costs by supporting exercise and recreation. Building parks often increases the value of nearby properties, increasing property tax revenue. Parks, programs, and open spaces attract businesses and trained employees in search of a high quality of life. Parks, programs, and open spaces attract tourists and boost recreational spending. Parks and open spaces conserve land and open space that helps safeguard sensitive lands in environmental conditions. in environmental conditions. Accepting the July Parks and Recreation Month proclamation are Rich Mueller, Colleen Duffy, recreational specialists, Rich and Colleen Supervisor, Mountain Crest Community Center...[610.66][610.66](laughter) Commissioner Brown?[614.20][614.20](laughter) We've got a fan over here. Facilitate outdoor recreation programming at Camp... Excuse me, Lee Canyon. Parks and Recreation Camp Programs and Marketing of Recreational Services. Parks and Recreation will offer free swimming July 4th and promotional rentals of sports, fishing, and bike equipment throughout July at Sunset Parks in recognition of this month. And on behalf of the Clark County Commission, we would like to present you with this proclamation honoring Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you very much.[644.73][644.73](applause)
Thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing Parks and Recreation Month and the value of the programs offered. And we wanted to highlight two of our employees, Rich Mueller and Colleen Duffy, who helped provide some of those awesome programs that you see.
Thank you. We just want to also remind everyone that this summer, don't let yourself get trapped in your house. We offer many, many indoor programs, and the cool air conditioning of our rec centers, and also at our pools. So, come on out and join us. And let me give this to Rich.
Well, as just mentioned just a little while ago, that July 4th is going to be free admission at all Clark County pools, but also on the 20th, we're going to have free rentals of our equipment at our Sunset Park rental office. And then also, we'll be giving away free 50th Anniversary Water Bottles for the first 200 people that check out equipment, also at the Sunset Rental Office.
Also, just wanted to let everyone know that we have water bottles, complimentary water bottles, that we brought with us today to celebrate our 50th anniversary, and we have them by the door. So, on your way out, please do pick up one and use it as a reminder to recreate this summer and come and join us.
Thank you. And please join all of us in honoring July as Parks and Recreation Month.
With that, we can move to Section Four Items Taken Separately. Item number 26 is to approve a contract for an angiograph biplane between Phillips Healthcare and the University Medical Center of Southern Nevada and authorize a Chief Executive Officer to sign the agreement. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to... I pulled this item because there were some questions on this particular item in our last meeting, and we got some things clarified, and wanted to make sure that we put it on the record and make sure the public and the commissioners are fully aware of what the... How we resolve this issue here.
Sure. Yes, sir. Brian Brammer from University Medical Center. This was on a previous agenda. We, in the course of going through things, there was an issue related to their business license. It turned out that they had not gone through all the procedures, completed the procedures to renew their business license. They knew they now have their business license in good standing and were ready to proceed with the contract.
And thank you, Commissioner Sisalak. You...
Thank you. I did have a question in my briefing. I don't know if you got an answer to it about what do we do with the old piece of equipment? I'm sure it's valuable. Do we donate it to somebody?
This one actually... The useful life on a biplane angiography unit is probably seven or eight years. This one's thirteen years old. It is shot. We've had to continually maintain it, and this is on the verge of an emergent replacement. So, it... This machine would be a burden to anybody if they took it. It needs to be taken out and salvaged.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Thank you. Yes, sir. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval, please.
We have a motion for approval on item number 26. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
Motion passed. It's not quite 10:00 a.m., so we can move to your business agenda. Item number 48 is to discuss a possible ordinance to increase the sales taxes authorized by Senate Bill One, more COPS tax, and take any other action deemed appropriate. I see Sheriff Gillespie. I assume you have a presentation to make. Sheriff?
It's 48.
Unless you decided you don't need the money and you don't want to do it? I don't know if you're...[888.13][888.13](laughter) I don't think so. Sheriff Gillespie, thank you.
I won't go into the class that they taught us in academy about assumptions there. Some machines that...
I appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff.
There's a couple of things, first, I'd like to do. Yesterday was the fortieth anniversary of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, where the city of Las Vegas merged with the county sheriff and formed our organization that you see here today. As part of that, we had a patch developed or made to commemorate that, which you can see on my uniform here. And I brought a few of them with me today, so this is not trying to influence you in any way, shape, or form in regards to what we're discussing here today. I just think it's a nice thing to do for seven people that I spend a lot of time working with to provide a level of safety to this community, and I appreciate your support as well, your dialogue over the years. So, just a little bit of way of... For me saying to you, thank you for what you do. Don, if you hand those out to them, I'd appreciate it. Secondly, I've been very fortunate to take over as sheriff of an organization that I think has been led by a number of people that have just done a phenomenal job over the years. And one of those, Sheriff Ralph Lamb, is currently fighting some health issues in California. So, I would just ask everybody to have their thoughts and prayers out there for Sheriff Lamb as he continues to fight the fight. And you all know he is one tough man, and I'm sure he'll overcome this as he has some in the past. Today, we come before you to talk about the SB One. I think for those in attendance, as well as watching this in their homes, it's important to talk about this process that we need to now go through to have the county commission authorize or enable the sales tax that the legislature's approved. It is my understanding that today, we talk about the legislation that was approved by the legislature and sent back down to us here today. The purpose of that is for us to provide direction to county staff in drafting of the ordinance itself. Then we will come back, I believe, July the 16th for introduction of that particular ordinance. And then actually, it's scheduled August the 6th that we would again come back to the county commission, public discussion in regards to that proposed ordinance, as well as a vote at that time. Because I've already received questions within my organization, as well as from other entities that are impacted by this sales tax increase, or, hey, are we voting on this today? Or, you know, what's... And I think just for clarification purposes, that's why we're here today. I fully imagine that as we go through the next month, there'll be a number of questions from you as an elected body, as well as your staffs, in regards to a number of issues associated with the enabling of this tax. And I would just say, as in the past, myself, as well as the other police chiefs in the valley, would be more than happy to sit down and discuss and provide answers to those questions that you may have. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Chuck Callaway. Many of you are familiar with Chuck. He heads up our intergovernmental aspect of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. He and his staff, as well as yours, were engaged in many conversations up in Carson City for a number of months in regards to this particular Senate Bill One, as it ended up being called. And with that, I'd ask Chuck to provide you an overview of exactly what SB One means to us here today, what the legislature has sent down to us to allow to be enabled. Chuck?
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission, for the record, my name's Chuck Callaway, Director of Intergovernmental Services for Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. As you know, in 2004, the voters in Clark County approved a half-cent sales tax increase for the purpose of hiring and equipping police officers. The legislature in 2005 enabled half of that half-cent, a quarter cent, and told law enforcement that we had to come back to ask for the second quarter cent. As a result of the economic challenges that our agency faces, we decided that the 77th legislative session was the time for us to go back and request that second quarter cent of the Clark County Sales and Use Tax. We came before this body in December of 2012 and asked for your support of a resolution going into the legislative session to show that this action was supported by local government. This body passed that resolution with a five-to-two vote. We also received resolutions of support from the city of Las Vegas, the city of Henderson, Boulder City, the city of North Las Vegas, and the city of Mesquite. All of those were unanimous votes of support, with the exception of the city of Las Vegas, which had one nay vote. Ultimately, at the legislature, we were able to get a Assembly Taxation Committee Bill. It was Assembly Bill 496. That bill was amended numerous times during legislative session in both the Assembly and the Senate side. In April of this year, we came back before this body to ask for your support of the amended version as amended by the Assembly Taxation Committee. Ultimately, as you know, Assembly Bill 496 failed in the last seconds of the legislative session. It did receive a passing vote, but the vote was taken after the time limit had expired, the deadline for the legislative session. Subsequently, the governor called a special session, and Assembly Bill 496 was resurrected as Senate Bill One. Senate Bill One is basically the exact same language that Assembly Bill 496 was. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll take you through a short presentation to show exactly what Senate Bill One does. And also, it should be noted that the governor signed Senate Bill One into law on June 13th of this year. First off, in Section One of the bill, the supplanting language is removed from Section 13 of the 2005 Clark County Sales and Use Tax. As you probably know already from our previous presentation we gave, in 2005, the legislature put some language into the law to prevent the replacing of existing funding with the more COPS revenue. Because budgets have decreased due to the economic conditions we face, that supplanting language has put us into a bind with revenue from the first quarter cent. Section One would remove those restrictions until July 1st of 2016. And as a result of removing the supplanting language, the legislature required that we... That the periodic reporting that we do, we currently do quarterly reporting as to how our more COPS money is spent. And part of that reporting process will now require detailed reporting as to how any funds that were spent as a result of the supplanting language being removed, how those funds were spent, to ensure that it was for the purposes of hiring and equipping police officers as the voters intended. Section One also requires a copy of that detailed report to be submitted to the Director of the Legislative Council Bureau and also sent to the Interim Finance Committee before the date that the report is required to be submitted. I have not had conversations yet as to whether or not the Interim Finance Committee will require us to come before them as a body and present the report, but that is a possibility. Section Two of the bill adjusts the base fiscal year for each body going into 2015-2016 fiscal year. That's for the purposes of the supplanting language going back into place. It will set a new baseline so that we can determine as body whether or not supplanting is occurring. And then Section Three approves the increase of the sales tax of not more than .15%. The .15 came from the Assembly Taxation Committee. There was concern about giving us the entire quarter cent. The legislature felt that raising the sales tax that high would not be good with the current economic conditions we face, so they put a limit of up to .15% for the sales tax increase. And the increase must be enacted by an ordinance approved by a two-thirds vote of the Clark County Commission. And then the rate would be imposed on October 1st of 2013 or before July 1st of 2016, within that timeframe. Section 3.5 of the bill, if the increase is authorized, the county treasurer will not make an allotment of the proceeds unless the county treasurer is satisfied that the police department will meet the requirements of subsection... Or Section One, subsection 3.7. I'll explain in just a second what that is. This language was actually put into the bill at the very last week of the session by a conference committee that was put together between the Senate and the Assembly. The intent of this language, based on the conversations I had with leadership at the legislature, was they were concerned that bodies would just be shifted over from general fund to the more COPS fund, and then local government entities would eliminate general-funded positions. And it would be, in essence, a shell game. The citizens would not get additional police officers. It would just be shifting the bodies and eliminating positions. The intent of this was to prevent that from happening. Section 3.5 continued, "If the county treasurer determines that an allotment will not be made, any other police department may apply for approval of the unused funds. The county treasurer must be satisfied that the requesting police department meets the requirements of subsection one of section 3.7." That language was a carryover of Assembly Bill 572 from the last legislative session. Current Speaker Marilyn Kirkpatrick had put that language into the bill because of concerns about what had occurred with North Las Vegas and their expenditure of the more COPS funds. The intent of that was to put some teeth into the law that if an agency didn't properly use their funds, another agency could apply to get some of that revenue. And then Section 3.7 is the part I alluded to a second ago. What this part says basically is that a police department shall not expend any of the more COPS revenue that's given to them by the county treasurer unless they hire an equal number of police officers in unfilled budgeted positions using money other than the proceeds. The conversations I had with leadership, and we know that sometimes the Legislative Council Bureau drafts the language a little bit different than what the conversations are, the intent that was told to me was, as I stated, they didn't want general-funded positions that are currently on the books and budgeted for to be eliminated. Their interaction with me stated that there was a couple ways that agencies could go about doing this. You could either... Let's say you had ten current authorized budgeted positions. You could fill two of those positions if you had the revenue to do that in your general fund, and then you could fill two more COPS positions. If you had the revenue to fill all ten of those positions that were budgeted and vacant authorized positions, then you could have total access to the more COPS revenue, and you could potentially hire however many officers you could hire with the available revenue in that fund. That was the intent described to me by leadership at the legislature. And then Section 3.7 continued, "If, based on your current funding, in essence, you're not able to fill budgeted unfilled positions, you could apply for a waiver." That waiver would have to be received from the Committee on Local Government Finance. And then the Committee on Local Government Finance must, on or before September 1st of each year, submit a report to the Legislative Commission regarding the number of waivers they had granted to local law enforcement agencies that received the funds and why the waivers were granted. And then finally, in Section Four, the act becomes effective upon passage and approval and sunsets on October 1st, 2025. There were some discussion at the legislature, and an amendment was put in on the Senate side for a four-year sunset. That language was ultimately removed, and the sunset was put back to 2025, which is the original language from the 2005 more COPS Sales and Use Tax. Based on the way the bill reads and the language and the intent from the legislature, our recommendation to this body is, number one, we would respectfully request that an ordinance be drafted to enact the .15% increase to the Clark County Sales and Use Tax of 2005, and that that proposed increase go into effect effective October 1st, 2013. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway. Sheriff, second conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
This time, I'm going to take some public comment, and then I'll turn over the board. I've got one card from Mr. Hodges. Anyone else wishing to comment, please come on down. Morning, Mr. Hodges.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the Commission. The police are very much a part of our community. They have families. We often look at the police as a friend and an enemy. They're your friend, you need them. They're the enemy when you don't want to be bothered with them, whatever. with them, whatever. But the objective is, the police is a vital part of the community. We need them, no doubt about it. And we have one of the finest sheriffs in the country. And Clark County is a pretty good-sized county to, to be covered. And I do know that he plays a double role as, as both sheriff and cop because the City of Las Vegas is on his jurisdiction as for police protection. But anyway, I'm just saying, since, since the last word that comes before y'all, well, whatever you can do to help the police arrive at the goal that they need to hire more policemen, I hope y'all will be there to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Anyone else wishing to address the board on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I'll turn over the board for questions of the sheriff and Mr. Calloway. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Wickley.
Yes, sir. Can you give a, just give us a scenario once again leading up to the August 6th meeting? So today is just information only.
Today is just for discussion purposes, for the sheriff to make his presentation. The meeting on July 16th will be to introduce the ordinance, if in fact, we direct Ms. Miller to draw up an ordinance. And bring it forward at the subsequent meeting, which is August, what, 6th?
And August 6th would be the public hearing, and then we'd take possible action.
Correct.
Okay.
That's a timeframe.
All right, thank you.
Questions? I'll give everybody, I've got a bunch, but I'll go to everybody. Commissioner Jun Kiliani.
Thank you. Remind me when the current sales tax expires. This one goes out 2025. Is that the same timing that the current?
Correct.
Okay. So they tied it back to that. There was an amendment, as you spoke to, but that did not go in. Okay. And then the supplanting language expires 2016. Was there any prohibition in using the 130 million that's currently in the more tax fund?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Commissioner Jun Kiliani, there was discussion of that. There was a lot of discussion, especially on the Senate side, of why don't you just tap into that revenue that's there? We tried to explain to the legislature that we have, right now, approximately 520 police officers that were hired with the initial quarter cent, and that revenue sustains those officers through the sunset of the tax and beyond, considering that they, that there may not be an appetite to lift the sunset. I would have to defer to our Chief Financial Officer Karen Keller as to whether or not there's any additional revenue in there that could be used at this time. I know we are drawing into that fund every year, and based on some projections that were done, if we do draw into that fund too much to use that revenue for other purposes, that we would deplete that fund in a short period of time.
And maybe we, if at some point Karen, and she's very good at it as well, you can address that, or at least get us some documentation to show what that lifespan is so that we understand that. Because I think you said yesterday, one to two million a year is what you're drawing down on it at this point, but I'm not sure how that works, if you want to comment that way.
I'll handle that question, Commissioner. Basically, there was a fair amount of discussion at the legislature throughout the process as to what supplanting funds would be used for, as well as what the, any increase to the sales tax would be used for. And it was made clear to me, and I made clear back to legislators, that it would be used for police officers and their associated equipment, because that's what the voters approved it for. So anything that we would use that for would have to go to those two things.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, the, for this fiscal year that we just started, we're planning-
Ms. Keller, I apologize. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Karen Keller, Chief Financial Officer for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. We are planning to go into that fund balance, about $4 million for this fiscal year that we're going forward. Each year as we progress, that number would get a little bit larger. If we were to just shift too money, too many expenses into that fund, we would deplete that fund balance and then not be able to sustain those officers that were funded with those.
And do you have a, a, a way to project out then for your depletion? I'm going to assume as some retire out of the more cops funding, separate from your current officers that aren't funding from that, then does that free up some revenue?
The more cops officers were all, started to be hired just a few years ago, so we don't have retirements coming out of there yet, but I do have a projection that I'd be more than happy to make available to you.
Okay, that would be helpful to visually see. Thank you, I appreciate that. We spoke about, do you have an additional ending fund balance, separate from the more cops one? Because I know we had you spending down on your, your reserves.
Our general fund balance had about, is expected to have about $31 million as we go into this fiscal year. We are anticipating that we will need $30 million of that to get us through this fiscal year. That'll leave us with a fund balance of about $1 million in our general fund.
Okay. And then, and, and, we spoke about this yesterday, but I want to put it on the record. I'd like you to comment publicly about the issue of the cameras and where that potential financing can come from. I know there was going to be an amendment, but I believe the sheriff worked out something with NAACP, and that amendment did not get put on to require a dedicated source out of the .15 for those cameras, but you have a, a different plan for that, and I'd like to get that.
Well, there's actually a couple of parts to that, Commissioner. Yes, there was discussion at the legislature about an amendment in the use of cameras. However, there was not a lot of support at the legislature for amending the law in that manner. They were concerned about earmarking certain aspects of this fund for, for certain things. So seeing that on one side, as well as the other side of the NAACP, who is the, the carrier for the most part of, of that concern, I made a commitment to Frank Hawkins and the NAACP, as well as Alan Lichtenstein of the ACLU, a commitment that I had made to them prior, that we would proceed with a camera project, but it would be funded out of seizure funds. And as seizure funds become made available through the court process, we will put that into that account, and when we have so much money in there to, in order for us to, to start the process, that's what we, that's what we, we will do.
And that was the trigger, I think you said, was 400,000?
The actual project itself, to run at two area commands, which is what we agreed to from a pilot project standpoint, would be approximately a little over 1.5 million. But we need roughly 400,000 initially to start it, because there is a fair amount of infrastructure that we have to upgrade at our area commands to move that data from the video to where it will be housed.
And what was your time projection again for?
Six to nine months after we start the project, it would be implemented, and there would be implementation.
Okay, and so there wasn't a prohibition from the legislature that we could just say, if we approve this additional blessed tax, that we would like to fund your pilot project, and then any additional dollars, let you use it from the seizure to roll out additional programming, correct?
Received no direction from the legislature in regards to that amendment. It was, it didn't follow, didn't-
I'm just looking for ways that there might be some startup dollars, or maybe we can get the pilot project going sooner and then allow the seizure fund to maybe just kick in as you envisioned, but that might be for an additional center or something along those lines. So I'm just experimenting with that part of it. And the, when you made the commitment on the supplanting language, you said it would be for police officers and their equipment, that I guess includes uniforms, cars, guns. What else would you envision in that? We're not paying for radios, correct?
Correct, we do. Portable radios.
Portables, but not the system-
In-car radios, the mobiles that go in the car, you know, the equipment that goes along with the car.
With the car, okay.
Is a part of that. Tasers are a part of that. Actually, the officers themselves purchase their own firearms, so that's not actually a part of it. And then those hired from this point forward, we could budget as well for cameras.
Okay. And then, when you say radios, because I don't want the public to think we're paying twice for the new radio system that I think Fiscal Affairs approved.
This is, uh, this would be the purchase of portable radios that we would normally purchase for officers when we hire them.
Okay.
Okay, so we've done this in the-
And then separate, I just want to be clear, because you, you had a different budget that you used, and I believe Fiscal Affairs approved, because that other radio system wasn't communicating, the old 900 megahertz or whatever the heck the thing was, and so therefore, that project's moving forward, you don't really need to use this money for that part, is my understanding.
No, we have money budgeted for the new radio project.
Okay.
Correct. That does not, we will not be using-
Yeah, you're just talking to-
Money within the more cops for the funding of that project.
Right. And then there is also language in the current law that requires that, I think it was 80, I haven't gone back and looked at this, about 80% of the money had to be for officers in neighborhoods, so to speak. That is still in play?
Yes. Correct. We will still commit to the 80, 80/20 aspect, and that's part of our reporting process and has been part of our reporting process when we've gone back to the legislature each legislative session.
And I do want to thank Chuck for the information you emailed over, because I do think, regardless of where I land on this, that you've done a much better job at doing community-oriented policing. Safe Village is a perfect example of what we heard today, but we have Shield of Hope. There's a lot of different programming going on based on neighborhood needs, and so I think no matter what, that still has to be the focus, because otherwise people, you know, they, you have to protect the strip. We completely support that because it's our tourist dollars, but we also want to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and that there's a regular patrol, and whether it's on bike or car or whatever. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, because through your CLPS program that actually goes on in all of our neighborhood areas, you've got community-oriented police as well dedicated. Where would the correctional officers come into play at the, that might, that could assist us in our budgeting down the road? Is that, they're an officer, I mean, they're an officer, and officer, and officer, but those specifically, is there any, because you're short funding over in that budget as well?
This money was not voted upon nor approved for the voters for use at Clark County Detention Center.
But it was for officers?
For police.
That's always been our debate on that part.
It's police officers and those that work in Clark County Detention Center are correction officers.
Okay. And then if this, this were to pass, I think the understanding would be that there would not be an increase asked from the commissioner city in at least the 2014, 2015, 2016 year. Is that anything that's been discussed with our staff or anything along those lines?
You're saying I'm not going to ask you all the-
You can ask, but we don't have to necessarily.
Well, I know that very well. The last couple of years, you've actually taken it back, less than what I asked, but with that being said, listen, what this money affords us to be able to do is to fill our $30 million shortfall that we have at the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. And the city and the county tell you the same thing that I said when I've been back here before, those contribution levels are going to have to look at being increased. So this will help us, but this is not a long-term solution. This helps us today. It's very well needed. If we don't get it, your, the county commission, as well as the city council, have made it very clear to me that you will not be able to fill that $30 million shortfall, and therefore we'll have to reduce more positions than then we've already had to.
And at this point, you've eliminated your vacancy savings, correct? You don't, you eliminated vacancies, you've not had to lay off anybody, correct? If I'm, if I recall correctly?
That, that is correct. We have not had to lay anyone off.
How many civilian do you have versus officers?
Karen, can you give me the exact numbers on civilian, please?
Do you maintain a two to one, or what is-
Civilians are 1,307 that we have authorized. In commission, we have 2,555 authorized, including the existing first quarter cent.
Okay. Close to two to one then, okay. That's what I have for now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd have got one else's hands, I'll go. You want to go? Commissioner Scott, go ahead. Then I'll go after you.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions that have been asked. I had some of those as well. I think going into this, we need to make the case for our benefit, as well as our constituents, that this money is needed. And I've gotten several emails. I got emails immediately after the bill passed the legislature. I thought I'd just read a little bit of a couple of these. "I only support the increase if it is used for hiring additional officers and equipping officers with body-mounted video cameras, and hope you and the other commissioners have the power to stipulate how the money is used. I do not support a sales tax increase if any of it can be used for additional pay and benefits for existing officers." Another said, "What guarantee do we have that every penny of the tax increase will be used as intended? And what jurisdictions will the money go to? What will the money be spent on?" So I think it's, we had other questions about the budget and, and if, if Metro's budget is being used wisely, and I think these are the things that we need to bring forth for our constituents. And so I, I heard it stated already that all the money will go toward more officers. I think another thing we need to be convinced about, that the budget is tight, that all the money's being used wisely, negotiations are being done well. And third, that we can relate this to crime statistics, and I mentioned this to the sheriff earlier. I'd like to see, as we go on in this process, a comparison when we have more cops, does crime go down when we have fewer cops? How do those statistics compare? And, and by doing this, we're taking the right steps to protect our community and to make it safe. So those are three items that I'd like to see as we go on with the discussion. Thank you.
We can definitely provide that information to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff, and I've, Commissioner, I've got a list of them here. Some of them are mine and some have come from constituents, and I apologize, some of them are a little pointed, so I'm gonna, you know, you and I have talked about this numerous times, and you know, I am philosophically opposed to raising taxes, but I keep, trying to keep an open mind. This is a bifurcated bill, SB 1, right? So the supplemental language, supplementing language, supplanting language, rather, will stay in place even if the increase is not granted, correctly? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then-
Yeah, there's, there's no requirement upon you to act upon the supplanting language that already went into effect.
Right. And the balance of the current account reserve is how much? 130 million, 140 million?
It's approximately 124 million.
124 million. And how much is collected annually?
We're bringing in about 60 million, and our budget is spending 64, so we're at a $4 million deficit.
And how much are we down from what we were before the economic downturn on the 60 million collection?
Let me look, and I'll get that number for you.
Okay, if you could come back with that. Under the new, the .15 that you're proposing, how much are you anticipating the raise from that?
30 to 33 million, coming to the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department.
Okay. And how many cops are you anticipating to hire as also the 30 to 33 million?
In addition, what we're planning on doing, if we receive no additional funding from the 318, 318 million that currently the city and the county contribute to the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department's budget, we would be looking at taking a considerable amount of that money and use it towards saving 250 positions that we currently have. Okay? We would have to get one of those waivers that Chuck talked about. But in addition to that 250 that we'll be able to keep, we anticipate over the next two to three years to be able to hire an additional 100 at the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department.
Okay, so of the 255, 2,555 authorized positions that you have today, those brought up, how many of those are filled? They're authorized and funded, how many of them are filled?
We are 22 short.
In the general fund.
We're 22 short on the general fund, and we have Academy scheduled for July 11th.
So will those officers coming out of the Academy fill those positions or fill more cops positions?
Fill those positions.
So then they'll be totally filled, and you could access the supplanting language for the entire amount, moving forward?
Well, we won't see any of the revenue from the .15 if you enable the tax and it starts to be collected in October. We would not see any additional funds to us out of that until January of 14.
Okay. How many additional officers do you expect to be on the street July 2nd, 2014?
Than we currently have today?
Right. A year from today?
Well, it's very hard for me to speculate on that, Commissioner, because I don't know about retirements and, and a number of other things. I don't know how many people are going to make it through the Academy or not make it through the Academy, but I don't see us significantly increasing more than that which we have today, because we'll only see in the additional revenue for six months.
So there would be no significant increase a year from today?
No.
Okay. And then, the, would P-PACE employees to support the additional officers also be paid through the more cops increase?
No.
So who's going to pick up that cost?
The P-PACE. If there's a, if there's a contract agreement and they receive an increase that will come through the normal general fund, as it has in the past.
No, I, I thought that P-PACE was directly proportionate to the number of officers. It's about a two to one.
We do not fund civilian position out of the more cops money.
So the county and the city would be on the hook for that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the biggest question I get from constituents is, with the economic downturn, obviously people have lost their jobs and taken reductions in- downturn, obviously people have lost their jobs, and taken reductions and so forth, will there be raises for the three bargaining units in the upcoming year?
Well, number one, I-
Restorations, I apologize.
I said to the legislature, and I've said to people in town, that what we are looking at as an entity today is the restoration of merit and longevity. That's a normal progression that a person makes throughout their career, when they hire on, this is their money that they make when they come in, and this is where they top out. Whether you're a civilian employee, or a commissioned employee at the Metropolitan Police Department, some of it's been removed totally for a period of time, and some of it's been partially removed. So we're looking at reinstating that, we actually budgeted for that in this budget cycle. Any other salary benefit contributions will be part of the negotiation process, which you're very aware of, sitting on Fiscal Affairs.
I am, you're, so the rest-
And I understand that the economy has not recovered, I understand our revenues are not back to where they were, I understand very clearly that we, that I, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, have a $30 million shortfall. I understand that, Commissioner. So I can tell you that I have a lot of conversations with leadership within the bargaining units, as well as people within my own organization, in regards to truly what are expectations in regards to salary and benefit packages.
Okay, so the restoration will be four and a half, correct, per year? And anything-
Four and a half for?
Merit and longevity.
Correct, there is a 4% increase for merit, and then there's a 0.5% increase on longevity, some get merit, some get longevity, depends where you're at in your particular career.
Okay, then the statement was made that all 520 are funded to the end? What was that, Mr. Calloway? You made some comment that-
Mr. Chairman, the more cops sales and use tax sunsets in 2025.
Right.
So the purpose, my understanding from the fiscal side, is the purpose of having a fund balance in the more cops fund was to sustain those 520 officers that are in that fund throughout their careers, and also if the sunset is not lifted, and those officers are still in place and have not retired, there would need to be funding to carry those officers throughout until they retired.
And you're saying that there's enough funding there with the 124 million to carry them beyond?
Commissioner, I'm not sure, I guess that would be a question for Karen, I, you know, I think that part of that question is, is that we project how much revenue is going to come from the first quarter cent, and also potentially the second .15. So depending on how much revenue comes in, if, if sales tax were, were to increase, or people spent more, and we got more revenue from sales tax, whether it's the first quarter cent, or whether it's this, this increase, then we could see more revenue coming in, or we could see a decrease in revenue. So I think it would be difficult to determine exactly how many of those officers, but, but the intent of that fund balance is to sustain those officers, and also sustain them past the sunset of the tax.
I understand, but you must have done a study at the beginning to determine how much you were going to raise every year with the quarter cent, and then how the money was going to go out, you know, on those graphs, that kind of bisect, and then you move forward? Right, you have that?
Here. We do have schedules that we've created that projected revenue from the very beginning all the way through, as well as the expenses from the very beginning all the way through, and show that we'll be able to support those officers through the end of their career.
And Mr. Calloway, at the beginning said, "and beyond," how much beyond? How much extras in there?
Well, you look at when the tax was enabled in 2005, and we actually started seeing revenue, I believe, January of '06.
That's correct.
So 20 years, which is basically a minimum number of years that an officer normally works, they don't even have the ability to retire, majority of them, after 20 years, that takes us to 2026. So in a number of cases, you're looking five to 10 years out, that we would potentially be paying for employees' salary and benefit costs, that we don't have tax revenue if the tax is not continued.
Beyond 2026, you mean?
2025.
Okay.
Sunset's in 2025.
Okay, and how much has it gone down? Do you have that number?
We are projecting to use $4 million this fiscal year that we just started. And to answer your prior questions, the highest year that we had on revenue for the first quarter cent was $70 million. Last fiscal year, we're expecting to close out with $55 million. We don't have those final numbers yet, even though the year just closed.
So as the economy improves, the balance will replenish itself, and it'll start to grow again, if you're only taking out 2 million a year, right? Since it's fallen 15 million-
We're, we're taking out, projecting 4 million for this upcoming fiscal year, but again, those numbers will increase over time as the officers progress through the salary schedules.
That's if the merit is restored immediately, they'll progress up steps, otherwise it wouldn't increase at all, would they?
The merit and longevity are the increases that they would see over time, and for us in our projections, we expect that at some point, we were starting at this next fiscal year, they would start to see those increases coming in again, and it takes about a 10-year period of time for those officers to progress through the salary schedule. So you would see increases each year based on what officers hired in, and at what point in the salary structure they were at.
So have we done a forecast or an analysis on the expected increase in sales tax, which I believe we factored at two and a half or 3%? George, what are we, 3?
That is the rate that we're using in our projections as well, is 3%.
So if it increases 3 off of 55 million, it's going to get another 2 million out of that, so then you wouldn't be drawing down that account at all?
The projections that we have include that increase in the sales tax in the revenue numbers.
So you're drawing 2 in addition to the 3 that we're anticipating is going to increase?
We are projecting overall, we will spend $4 million more than the total revenue that comes into the fund. That includes the sales tax and all, any interest that we earn on those funds.
Okay, but as it starts increasing, will it not start replenishing the fund?
If the expenses are increasing at a higher rate than what the revenue is increasing, which is what we expect, because we're not going to have a continued big gain year to year in sales tax, it's going to be kind of a steady, in some years it's going to be a little bit down, and that's what we project over the life of the, the tax revenue, is that some years you're going to have a 3% gain, other years we've had substantial reductions in what that has been, so we average it out over the period of time.
Okay. Thank you very much, and who else has got questions? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Sheriff, just for some clarification, if we could go to the process, 3.5, and then into 3.7, where the county treasurer determines? The treasurer is satisfied that the police department will meet the requirements of subsection 1 of section 3.7. And what specifically is that again?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Commissioner Brown. What that section is, is that we would have to show the county treasurer that we intend to fill any current budgeted vacant positions in order to access the revenue from the more cops' sales and use tax.
So that's a simple determinant, that whatever is budgeted unfilled, and it was indicated that there's 10 positions?
22, I believe.
The 22?
Commissioner, right now.
And then once those 22 are filled, then you can access and continue to hire?
If we had funds available in the, the additional funds, or funds in the .15, correct? But this July, we will not have access to that money. Actually, Commissioner, I mean to interrupt you, but that's also part of the commitment, or the discussion that was had at the legislature. They wanted to make sure that not only us, but other law enforcement entities weren't holding open budgeted authorized positions, they wanted us to have those filled. So, you know, that's why we made a commitment, I actually had already made a commitment, July, and then we will run another Academy in January as well, because we will see some attrition throughout the organization between July and January as well. January, December, January tends to be a time where we see a number of people retire.
And I'd like to pick up on what Commissioner Scott indicated in some of her comments, is most of the interaction I've had with citizens and comments, questions, deal with more cops. People have definitely separated hiring more officers and everything else, all the scenarios that you'll use money for. And what I've heard today is, it's very, very specific that only officers slash equipment to support those offices would be used with this additional money. And then there's a, a paper trail, accountable, auditable, a lot of people will be looking at it, and that's what you've mentioned and have stated on the record today. Great. Take me back a little bit, what was the highest year over the past five years of Metro's total budget? I think we had a 514-
549 million was our peak.
549, and what year was that?
Well, we had two years, actually, we were at 549. I want to say '08, '09 was the first year.
We'll just say, and now, this past year, the approved budget was 489.
Correct.
Okay, and in that time period, our, and we'll, we'll say in and around the 549 number, our officer per capita number had gone up over 2?
Correct, authorized.
And that was 2.3?
0.6.
And currently, in the approved fiscal year, we are down to 1.73?
4, I believe, 1.74.
And this is where I need some clarity, even if everything moves forward, as far as the unfilled, approved, budgeted positions, the more cops, you're saying that the current Academy has 22, we could certainly initiate, if everything moves forward, additional academies. What's the attrition rate on an annual basis?
You know, it really varies for us, Commissioner, because when we, sometimes when we've hired large numbers, but I feel comfortable in telling you 50 to 60 a year, police officer positions, that is.
Okay, and maybe in the next few weeks, as we prepare for the public hearing, we can answer this statistically. What I'm hearing and what I'm seeing on numbers is, even if we move forward, the next few years are just going to be sustainable. It's to almost stop this backward trend of not only budgeting your department, but putting real officers on the street. I don't see too much growth opportunity in the first 18 months or two years, especially if the attrition rate comes up. And, and the point being, is we're not moving forward to increase the size of Metro and grow the police department. We're borderline in a, I would say, a crisis situation, I think the crime statistics have indicated that, and this officer per capita is certainly one of the most prevalent statistics that we put out there. So if you could, and with Karen or whomever, if you could kind of flowchart that for me, so even in a best-case scenario, over the next few years with the additional .15, what those officer per capita numbers would be projected to be, and what impact you think may be on the budget? Because certainly, when we find ourselves a year from now, separate from the more cops, our overall Metro police budget is going to be critically important, depending on the fiscal situation at both the City of Las Vegas and Clark County. So there's a lot of these other factors that are coming in, I, I think that are being, if not ignored, kind of separated, which is okay, but it has to be part of this big picture. And again, the, the more cops and the transparency about that, I think the goal is to stop the backward trend and get some stability over there, as we hopefully come out of this recession and grow over the next decade.
We can supply that for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you indicated, I think Commissioner Brown asked you about the, the Academy. You said you had 22 vacant positions, right? How many are currently in the Academy?
The Academy starts July the 11th, and I believe we have 47 slots set aside, that'll be to fill the general fund, as well as some of the positions available to us on the initial quarter cent.
Okay, and then, when you and I had an opportunity to meet, and thank you very much for the time, because I had a number of questions as well, we all have neighborhood meetings coming up, and a lot of our constituents are sending us emails and asking us a lot of questions, and you and I talked about, of course, more officers, along with diversity training. With that, you addressed that with me, and that's something that you will be addressing with the upcoming academies. Can we put that on the record?
Most definitely, sir, yes.
Also, too, one of the concerns I brought to your attention-